Before we get started with the meeting, I do want to acknowledge a few of the volunteer commissioners, some of the city staff, as well as other individuals that have come to join us this evening. From the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, Mr. Ervin Ellis from District 4, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. From the Civil Service Board of Review, Mr. Gene Eldrich, also lives in District 4, please stand and be recognized. The Housing Advisory Board, Cheryl McLennan, please stand and be recognized, District 4. For the Human Affairs Commission, Dorothy Cole, please stand and be recognized. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, we actually have the Chair and also in District 4, Willie Agee, please stand and be recognized. For the Parking and Traffic Commission, Barbara Brooks, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for joining us. And then for the Senior Center Advisory Board, Maxine Toller, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. And also, I want to acknowledge some of the block clubs. So Cheryl McLennan, Second Avenue, please stand and be recognized again, double duty. For the Van Ness Spinning Avenue Block Club, Dorothy Cole, please stand and be recognized again, double duty. For the Assembly Member, Autumn Burke, we have a representative of the 62nd Assembly District, please help me represent Representative Robin Poole-Miles. And Robert Poole-Miles, stand up, also wears a double hat. He's also the Mayor of the City of Laundale. Thank you very much for joining us. As I'm looking through the audience, our Economic Director, Reverend Chris Jackson, if you would please. Our Manager of Economic Direction, Sharon Garnett, there she is right there. Please give me a round of applause, there's too many officers to mention, but help me recognize Inglewood Police Department, officers are in the house. I wish tonight y'all try to get unruly with me. I am armed and dangerous. Also, help me recognize our video crew, Thomas Bun and his crew as well. Please give them a wave and a hand as well for their support. So if I have missed any of the Commissioners, Special Dignitaries, please make sure I get the business cards to my Council Assistant, Claudette Matthews, so I can recognize you later on during the program. So this particular event, our theme is "Defining Our Future: The Year of Progress and Advancement." If anybody knows anything about the City of Inglewood, in these last several years, times have changed. And if you know when you come to District 4 Town Hall Meetings, you're coming here for knowledge. And we'll make sure you get the information, so everyone should have a tote bag, and in one of that, in your tote bags, everyone should have a pen. Plenty of papers that should be inside that, because I'll be asking for you to refer to that. So, let's get started. I know you just love our beautiful boulevards, that's nice and smooth, no lane closures, and that you're just all excited about it, until you go down Imperial Highway. Are you feeling me? Hello? And also, with these magnitude of rains we've had, we've had a number of challenges of our public works staff trying to keep up with all the potholes. So let me share with you the man of the hour that handles all of our public works, our streets, our lights, sidewalks, curbs, et cetera. Please help me recognize Lewis Atwell, Public Works Director of City of Inglewood. Now wait a minute, y'all can do better than that. We got the man here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Franklin. So Councilman did mention all the calamities that are going on in the world and mudslides, but he didn't mention the traffic on Century Boulevard. I have to apologize about that, and I'll get into it a little bit more, but we are making progress. Just real quick, over the last five years, we've actually paved about 150 lane miles in the city. Before that, we used to do two. So we used to average about two a year before I came onboard, and now we do about 30 lane miles a year, which is quite an improvement. And you see that primarily in your residential neighborhoods, or you see it on La Brea, or you see it on Florence, and now we're seeing it on Century and Imperial. See if I can work this thing. There we go. So a little bit about the Public Works Department, many of you have come here before, and I kind of give the same spiel, but we're made up of nine divisions. We Engineering, Environmental Services, and I'll get into a little bit more on each one of these. Fleet Services, General Services, GIS, which is mapping. Public Services, Transportation Engineering, Water Resources, and Permitting. So all of those divisions essentially do our core services. And within the Engineering, we design, construct, and inspect all of the utilities and infrastructure within the public right-of-way. The public right-of-way is essentially from back a sidewalk where your front yard ends and goes to the other side of the street, which is back a sidewalk. We handle everything within that corridor. So anytime a utility company like Edison or AT&amp;T comes in and wants to dig up the street, they have to come to the Public Works Department to pull a permit. And what we do is, we inspect their work and make sure it's constructed properly under the American Public Works Association Green Book. We maintain the city buildings, they may be at the park, or a library, or City Hall. And we issue permits for stormwater quality improvements. We manage the solid waste contract, which is consolidated to Republic. And we maintain, repair, and procure the vehicles that the police department drives, so they need us. So I'd like to begin tonight, at least to pat ourselves a little bit on the back. Century Boulevard Phase 1 is complete. Thank you. That is a project that had been in the works years before I came onboard. And the reason why it took so long to do at least Phase 1 was because there were slivers of property takes that took a long time to get. Anytime you have to deal with banks, it takes a long time, because most people don't own their homes, most businesses don't own the property that they have their business on, so we have to deal with the banks. But anyway, we finished it, and it's two miles long, all of Century's three miles, but we finished two miles of it. And it's essentially from Van Ness to Dodie, and then from Inglewood Ave. to La Cienega. And the next step is, we're out there right now, and we need to finish the gap in between. But I'll tell you, the palm trees look great. We put in mature palm trees, the lights, LED lights, we put in, we put in quite a bit, and it's a very expensive project, $19 million just for Phase 1. Phase 2 was another $19 million. Now fortunately, not all of that was from the general fund. We had grant funding for Metro, we had some bond money that we did it with, but once that project is done, it'll be good for another 100 years. And it's also primarily concrete, too. So this is one of my favorite projects, that when I came onboard and working with the Councilman and the Mayor, we used to do, like I was saying, two lane miles per year of streets. Two lane miles, that means a lane is about 12 feet wide, so we would essentially do two miles of street that was 12 feet wide, or maybe a mile that's 24 feet wide. So we didn't do very much. Like I said, we've been doing 30 miles a year, like never before. We're getting to the point where we're starting to be able to come back and slurry seal some of the streets we did five years ago, because the key is to never have to dig up a street again, just slurry seal it, continue to renew it. And that is our goal. So these are some of the streets that we've completed this past fiscal year, there are many more that we've done over the last five years. And this year, we did 16 lane miles just in District 4. That doesn't include District 1 and the other districts. What we do this year and next year is we alternate sides of the city. We'll do the east side of the city one year, we'll do the west side of the city the next year. And we do that with our concrete projects. So if you're getting a street done this year, most likely, next year, you'll get concrete work done. And the concrete work is a sidewalk replacement project, it's an annual project as well. We did 1,000 linear feet of sidewalk, 500 feet of curb, and we did 20 ADA ramps. Now, my mother always told me that you need to take care of people with disabilities, because that's the one group that anybody can join at any time. So we are doing as many of the ramps as possible, and we've done hundreds over the past five years. Our goal is to do the entire city. And these are some of the sidewalk areas, the ramps that we've done, these are the intersections. Sometimes, an intersection needs four ramps, sometimes it only needs two, but these are the intersections that we did in District 4. Now, these are the projects that we're currently working on. So these streets here were a part of the project I just mentioned, the residential street project, but they're not done because of the rains. The rains have really pushed us back. We need the rain, I also run the water division, but it will push projects back. So it's pushed back, the Century Boulevard project, Imperial, but you know what, it's worth it, because our reservoirs up north are full, our snowpack is really good, so we should have water for the next couple of years. And so this is Century Boulevard Phase 2, this one is $20 million, and we should have it completed by the end, winter 2019. I know it feels like winter right now, and it is 2019, but that's actually the end of this year. So we should finish that project much quicker. We're actually, my team, I don't know if Eloy Castillo is here, but what we did on this project, different than the Phase 1, is we're recycling the pavement in place. So we actually run a train of machines that picks up the pavement, grinds it, and then replaces it, which is much quicker than hauling it off-site and bringing it back. So that's really innovative, so we'll finish this project by the end of the year, as long as it doesn't keep raining. And then of course, Imperial Highway, what a mess. Imperial is like one of the worst streets ever.
Hello, come on, come on.
Yeah. So what we did differently than most cities did, and I worked with Councilman Franklin on this, was early on, we gave this project to the county. This is before I came onboard. Well, we took it back from the county, because it was taking too long. So we took it back, it's now under construction, and it should be done within a few months.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, right. Weather or not permitting. So that's a great project, I can't wait till it's done. And you know, it is painful during these construction periods. I've used the analogy surgery, it's painful when you get it, it's painful, you know, while you're getting it, but afterwards, hopefully, it's better. And I think that's where we're gonna go. And then Prairie is one that most people don't know about. We know about the street, but we don't know that it's currently under design, and we plan on redoing Prairie from Manchester all the way to the freeway. And it'll be a brand-new street. So that's one of our newest streets that we're adding to the fold. And of course, we have the Annual Streets and Alley's Project. We won't have as many this year in your district, but we'll have more concrete, so we'll do more sidewalks and ADA ramps. And that's pretty much it. I'm sorry?
And curbs?
Yeah, and curbs as well, any concrete. And if there's any questions, I know the mic is supposed to be going around.
If you have any questions or comments, raise your hand, keep your hand up until we bring a mic. Let's take the one, since the mic's coming up there by Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, right behind you, sir, the gentleman's hands up, and we'll get him right up front.
It's great to know what we do on the Imperial Streets and all, but my concern is the side streets, like 104th, 108th, even my Councilman Street and all. What kind of research and project has been placed in those, because it's rough.
Yeah. Right, so that'll be a part of the annual Streets and Alley's Project that we do every year. And like I said earlier, eventually, we will do every street in the city. I can't promise you it'll be in the next year or two, but that's our goal. And as long as the Council, what the Council's been doing differently than the Council's in the past, is they've been giving the Public Works Department about a million dollars of general fund money, the sacred general fund money, to do your streets. Most cities don't do that. Most cities rely on gas tax, which has been dwindling, because of electric vehicles, or because less people are driving, and also, gas prices have come down. But we've been doing the streets, and we'll eventually get to those streets.
Okay, one more question right here? Come on, Mike, let's go.
Is that his name, or?
Mike. Microphone with Mike.
Thank you very much, sir. I have two concerns. One, on Century, from the casino to Prairie, it's always blocked off, you can't use the right two lanes, and I never see any work taking place there. It's like it's wasted space-
It is.
-and a congestion that's not necessary, because it's never used, but it's just blocked off.
You are absolutely right. Let me answer that one real quick. So I have gone to my engineers, this is when I wish Eloy Castillo was here, because he could say, "Yeah, I came to..." I came to him, and I said, "Why are we taking all this real estate when we could be opening it up, at least for a dedicated right turn lane down on Prairie?" You know, it's a Prairie. So they're working on a redesign of that. That was, that's a mistake on our part.
We got to do with the mic.
He wants to ask another one.
I live on Van Ness. It is too fast, the traffic flow down Van Ness. Someone turned over, took out the light pole just last week. People are killed, and it's a routine occurrence every day. Why can't we get some speed bumps on Van Ness?
Okay, so, so speed bumps are only for residential neighborhoods, because if you put a speed hump on Van Ness, you will have more accidents. That's the first thing. It is difficult for the Public Works Department to monitor and regulate speed on those streets. Unfortunately, there are people that break the law. There's not much we can do. Now, I'm not gonna say the police department, because they're here and they have guns, but really, it's an enforcement issue. Now, the problem with Van Ness is, it's on the edge of the city, it splits between LA County, LA City, and also, the City of Inglewood, and Hawthorne on the south. But it is a difficult street, I understand. We did try, the county tried to do some, what they call "road dieting," but they end up creating more of a problem than they did fixing it. And that's why we went back to the way it is now, but I apologize about that.
One more, then it's my turn. Lady Nicole.
So my question is, they going north on Crenshaw, they have these white pillars. Are they gonna put those in Inglewood?
Are they?
They're at the corners, they're at the corners of the street.
Yeah, they're terrible.
They're terrible. They're not gonna do that in Inglewood, are they?
No.
Okay.
Not in District 4. I'm so busy-
There's your answer.
I'm so busy looking to the right, I didn't look to the left, and I'll explain to you what they are.
Okay.
Right here, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to know, I live on Spinning and Culverman, across the street from the school, and the traffic is so bad on that street, I wonder when they're gonna do something else besides just putting the stop signs, because people don't stop at the stop sign, they just go all the way through.
Yeah.
And fast.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that a lot, too. You know, I-
That's PD.
Yeah, I drive the city quite a bit, a lot of times, people look at stop signs, and I think it says "slow down" and not "stop." So I'm sorry about that.
Okay, my turn.
All of the calls, the emails that I've got from you, and not one comment came forward. Please share with us, Public Works Director, regarding the no-left-hand turn lane on 108th going eastbound as I approach Crenshaw, and you know it as Winchell's Donut, but yet, I get the calls of the fire department and your neighbors going on the other side of those buffers to make their left-hand turn. Can you help us with that?
I can, I can. And we also see this at 113th as well on Crenshaw. So what we plan on doing is, we plan on putting in a raised median, which allows for left-hand turn pockets coming off of Crenshaw, but not left turns going onto Crenshaw. And what we do is, it's an actual pocket that you can dip into, and then make your left turn off of Crenshaw, but it won't allow cross-traffic, because that street is very wide, and I understand, and the speeds can get up there and cause an accident. So that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try and protect the people that come off those streets, and they have to make a right-hand turn and cannot make a left.
Okay, I see three more hands, and then we got to go. But the next one, just so you know, that we were having a serious problem with the shopping center at Imperial and Crenshaw, and 113th and Wells Vargo. We had replaced not one, but two fire hydrants, because individuals are coming out of the Jack-in-the-Box driveway, trying to get to 113th, trying to beat traffic at 40 miles an hour. That is why, and then I met with the shopping center owner to make sure we worked in partnership, and there's artificial ballers that are there now, only to allow left-hand turns going southbound on Crenshaw to go into the Jack-in-the-Box, but not be able to go across the street, because according to the police department records and public works records, they discovered that the most, the high-probable accidents were traffic trying to go across from 113th to the shopping center and vice versa. Three more questions, and we'd need to go into the next one. Now, the young lady right here, the black hat, the black-
Hi, I live on 111th Place, and I've been living over there since 91, and I have, we have a problem with coming on 111th Place by the library, and I would like to know, could we get a signal light, because for some reason, people don't know when to wait their turn to make that left-hand turn or their right-hand turn for people to go across the street. So they run into each other, because they're trying to beat each other to go across the street. Is there a way that we get a signal, turn, you know, a turn arrow light?
Yeah, so what we could do is, we can look at that intersection, and according to, essentially, I won't call them rules of thumb, but there are thresholds that Caltrans puts up for traffic signals and stop signs. We can look at that and see if the side traffic is enough to warrant a traffic signal with a left-hand turn.
All right. I have two more. I see you gentlemen, and the young lady right back next to you, right there. Her, young lady right there, and then the gentleman back there, and then we need to move on. I gotta stay focused with the presenters and the timeframe. Yes, please speak.
I'd like to-
If you can stand, so we can see you up here at least, and the camera can see you as well, you're a lovely face. Thank you so much.
... that in the residential areas, they are doing some driveway repair and work. How is it determined whose driveway is repaired?
That's actually a great question. So what we do is, we repair the sidewalk and the driveway approach. We don't do people's private driveways, but I think that's what you're saying, is the one in the public right-of-way. So what we do is, we look at the driveways that are most unsafe. So if there were an elderly person that was walking down the sidewalk, and that driveway is cracked, and it has differential cracking, meaning that the cracks actually have one side higher than the other, those are the ones that we replace first. That's how we determine which ones are gonna be done and which ones aren't. And how much money is available? The Councilman said that, "Well, you can give us more money, I don't know what the problem is."
Well, because some of the money has come from federal government, the community development block grant funds, so we have to have only, there's a couple pools of money that he draws from, that we then put in the budget to make it happen. Final question for this presenter, and we need to move on. Yes, sir?
Yes, I live on 112th Street, and that street is aligned with the exit from the freeway, and a five o'clock in the afternoon. It's like people use it to cut off from traffic, and they go high speeds. Is there any way you guys can put like, speed bumps or anything?
I think, pretty soon, there's some poster boards over there. Is traffic one of them? Yeah, so you might wanna put a little sticker on there, because it's difficult for the Public Works Department to regulate the speed, you know, to be honest with you.
And also, 112th particularly, from Dodie to Prairie, there was a block club captain that expressed interest for speed humps, and that he was given a form to fill out, and have 75% of the property owners on that block, and he did not complete it. So if you wanna take the charge, see Ms. Matthews afterwards, and say you'd like to get an application to make that happen. Okay, let's get our presenter our hand, if you would please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So when you come to the Town Hall Meetings, everyone knows what is the key item I require for you to have.
And paper.
And paper. So if you don't take notes, I just wanted to let you know that this is being recorded, and that it'll be made available on the city's website, we have a YouTube link as well. And also, we're gonna have two DVDs made available from our, at our ICOP Center, Police Community Center, so you'll be able to check them out, library free of charge. I want to recognize a couple more people that just walked in. Please help me recognize, from the Aviation Commission, Jim Withrow. Jim? There he is, back over there. I also saw one of my bosses from the Senior Center Advisory Board, District 4, Dorothy Dolly Morrison. Yes. Got that. Trying to get all these names. I want to recognize District 4 Chairman of the Martin Luther King Junior Committee, Henry And then, finally, the one I saw in the audience, who said she was gonna be here to represent the Inglewood Unified School District, please help me, Board Member, Diane Falk. Okay, let's move on. None of the things that we've had involving the city has to do with homelessness. We also have the issues in reference to getting ready for the census count, because in 2020, it's gonna be a significant impact on our federal dollars, what we can get if we don't count. And it's critical, when I chaired it in 2010, that we were undercounted by over 20,000, which had a direct correlation with our federal dollars, to help those in need. And so I want you to talk and see the person that interfaces with the homeless encampments and the homeless individuals in the City of Inglewood, particularly in District 4, daily. Please help me recognize our distinguished person, Cinderella.
Good evening. Before I start, I would like Officer Sorio, he's in the lobby, and Sergeant Blaylock, please to come up. I just wanted to see, so you can see who I work with, and it's only a couple people here right now, besides my officers over here that helped me out a lot, my captain. This is Sergeant Reginald Blaylock, he's the Community Affairs Sergeant, my boss, and this is Officer Sorio, my partner. Also, he is part of the Inglewood Mental Evaluation Team, you'll see on one of my slides. Okay, I was tasked to discuss the homeless, our homeless count, and the things that are going on in the city about homelessness, and also, the census count. The City of Inglewood Homeless Count unofficial results for 2019, and I say unofficial, because the county has to put out their numbers before we put out ours. But because we were there simultaneously back in January, the third week in January, Wednesday, we did a homeless count, we kind of did our own count simultaneously to theirs. So when we tallied it up, we also counted ours, and they probably, we should have the same numbers. The numbers you're gonna see, like I said, they're unofficial. I know you see a lot of homeless out there, but we're trying, and you're gonna see, there's a drastic change in the numbers from last year. Okay, the Service Planning Area 8, which is South Bay, we are part of that area. It comes from Palace Verdi, southern part of Palace Verdi, all the way down to Inglewood and everything in between, which is Hawthorne, like I said, Palace Verdi, Hawthorne, Elsie Gondo, Torrance, Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, Inglewood, Gardena, we all make up SPAT 8, the Service Planning Area 8. In the Service Planning Area 8, we had last year, remember, this is all the way down to Palace Verdi, 869 sheltered, meaning these people were housed, they were sheltered. Transitional housing is not permanent, but they were sheltered. The unsheltered was 3,269. That means that they were on our streets, between Palace Verdi's and Inglewood, okay? The total for South Bay was 4,138. Now, this goes into our count for 2019 versus LA County 2018 results. The people in Inglewood were 94. That's what we counted this year. Last year, we had 187. That's 50% less than last year. Now, give or take, our numbers might be a little off, because it was, the weather was bad, people were in shelters, they were hiding, or something like that, but we were out there till like about midnight. It starts at 8 to midnight, so I believe that's, I should, we should receive a clap for that, because that's 50, that's 50%. The cars we had were 55, last year was 73. Now, the county probably add in the RVs to their count, so 73, that goes from Palace Verdi- That goes from Palace Verdis down to Inglewood. The RVs we counted were only four. Now, I know you guys know that, um, near the airport, it was called Manchester Square, it was the area they used to call Tent City, where for the homeless off of Arbovita and La Cienega. Well, they shut down about a year ago and when they shut down, they came to Inglewood. Um, we worked diligently with the city clerk, I'm sorry, city attorneys to get it where there's no RV parking in the city of Inglewood. So there is no RV parking in the city of Inglewood right now. We've been working on that for like two to three years, so another applause for that. If you do see RVs, if you do see the RVs, you contact us or contact our, um, traffic enforcement and they'll come and tag them. But we do have signs everywhere in the city that says, no RV parking, okay? Um, encampments, encampments are those that sleep outside. There's no count for LA County because they don't divide it like that. We tried to give you more accurate. So the encampments were people that you might see in makeshift shelters or homes with boxes or laying outside in front of businesses or in front of your homes, I'm sorry if they are, um, but that's what we counted this year, 23. Now, the sheltered for 2018 is 245, okay? That's total. Like our total, we broke it down to 94, 55, 40, that's total for, for LA County. Now, when you guys look at these sheets that are outside, it's gonna say LA County, we have some, um, give things, some flyers, and it's gonna say 500 or more people for Inglewood that are homeless. That's not true, okay? We have the US vets here and we have transitional housing. So they count, they count the US vets as homeless because they're not permanently housed like you and I are, okay? So when you look at those numbers, they look alarming, 500, but it's not true, okay? But on the street, there was 187 and 73, okay, for last year. LA County nationality data, now this is alarming, but it's the truth. African-Americans make up the most homeless in LA County. The most. That's alarming. 17,825 of African-Americans. When we go to meetings, they really don't even talk about others. They talk about me. They never talk about Hispanics or others because we're the most and we're the most difficult, I'm gonna be honest with you. We don't want the help. So when a lot of times we get out there and we ask help, they don't want the help because they get money. And so the more money you guys give, the more money they stay out. Social Security, they get Section Eight, they don't want that because you're not, you don't have to account for the money that you receive out on the streets. Hispanics, Latinos, 3,712. Big number, but not as much as ours. Others, 363. Why do people experience homelessness? Mental illness, substance abuse, loss of wages, divorce, family issues, disabilities, lack of affordable house, housing, or post-traumatic stress disorder for our vets. A lot of veterans come out and they can't handle being inside, they're so used to being outside, different things happen, they can't handle, you know, paying bills and being locked in, per se, as they call it. So we, you know, these are what we work with on a daily. So when we come in contact with somebody that's homeless, we have to literally ask these questions to figure out who they are and what's going on. These are our outreach partners for the city of Inglewood. LASSA is the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority. They are homeless. That's who governs the LA County, that's through the Board of Supervisors. So that's who we answer to, is LASSA. Um, St. Margaret Centers in, in Lenox, they are a great partner, they've been here in Inglewood for a long time, although they're in Lenox, that's our partners, that's our family. They help us feed, they help get the homeless shelter, they help put them in hotels, they help get their bills paid, they help my grandmother and my aunt pay some bills. They help you pay bills, they help you, um, get your driver's license or ID, they have mailboxes there for the homeless, so when they're out in the, in the street, they can go over there and get their mail. It's, I, I love them, I, I really do and I appreciate their help. Salvation, um, Departmental Health, that's our partners because a lot of people in the street are mental. They have mental issues. So we have a partner with Departmental Health, thank God, the Chief Franerata, it's his baby. Um, we have the Inglewood Mental Evaluation Team. Officer Sorio is the team. He and he has a clinician, um, her name is Anika Simpson, she's not here tonight, but she's a registered nurse and also a clinician. And they partner every day and they go out and assess. If you have a problem at home and you call 911 and you have someone that might be going through some mental issues or something like that, you will call Officer Sorio and he'll go out and assess. So this is, this has been a great help for us. Salvation Army, love them, that's right here on Queen Street in Inglewood. They feed the homeless. I know people don't like to say that, but they feed not just the homeless, but people that have, you know, low income. And they go and they give you groceries and they feed you, you come in, they embrace you, they invite you to church. That's a great organization. The US Vets of Inglewood, that's another partner. We also have, uh, emergency bed, as they call it, for us. If we have somebody that need a bed, we can call US Vets today and they will let me bring somebody in today without hesitation. That's a great partner for us. This is City of Inglewood's homeless outreach partners continue. These are the people that you would see that come and clean up. Republic, we know who that is, that picks up your trash. We're thankful for them, they do bulky items. We call them every time we have a large encampment cleanup, they come with the trucks, they come with their people, ready to go, no problem, I can call them at any time and they come out. I appreciate Republic. Ocean Blue Environmental, they're certified waste removal and disposable services for homeless waste contaminant, contamin, contamination, sorry. They are the ones that come out for the large, large homeless encampments. The one on 113th, I know you guys know at Prairie and 113th by the 105 freeway, that's your district. We just did a cleanup. We picked up over 4,800 pounds of debris. 4,800 pounds. It took two trucks, two, those big, what are the containers? Two containers to fill up everything over there. I know that's an ongoing problem, we're, 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 we're on it. Officer Sorio, Sergeant Blaylock went out just the other, I guess it was yesterday, and they were trying to get back in and they went over there and said, no, they're back out. So I know that we share that area with LA County. So if you see them on the off ramps of the freeways, that's LA County, okay? You have to call somebody else for that. But if they're in the inside, underneath the, um, the casino sign right there on the corner, that's the City of Inglewood's property. So we are to clean that up. Environment Solutions, now they're a smaller company, but they're supporters also, they're the ones that come out when we have smaller things to pick up trash or whatever and they'll come out right now, hey, can you come out? Yep, I can do it. They'll be there to pick it up. So you might see them riding around in a white little pickup truck, but they're the ones helping us pick up too. This is the Community Affairs Staff. My chief is Mark Franerata, my deputy chief is Louis Perez, my lieutenant who's not here is Scott Collins, my sergeant, which is Reginald Blaylock in the back. I'm the Senior Community Affairs Liaison, Officer Sorio, Inglewood Mental Evaluation Team and Anika Simpson. That is your Community Affairs Team that go out every day to try to clean up the community because of the homeless. I appreciate each and every one of them. This is our outreach team also. Inglewood Housing, these are people that we work with to get homeless off the street. Ms. Millie McDay is our Acting Manager for the Housing, Damian Pipkin is our CDBG and Outreach, Lori Jones is our Grants Coordinator, I'm gonna go a little fast. Public Works, Mr. Atwell, he just spoke, he's our Director, Angela Williams, Kenneth Henderson and Jeffrey Givens, they're the sanitation workers, so you might see them in white trucks, they pick up our, sometimes pick up our baskets or whatever, we all, it's partnership. Public Services, they're the ones that go out in, they're the ones that get dirty for us, on the streets cleaning up, they do it, okay? I pick them up sometimes, but these, these are the real, the ones that really work. Harry Frisby is our Superintendent, Rosa Vez Robinson is the Supervisor in our Public Service Staff. Code Enforcement, Mr. Jackson, he's here, I appreciate his team, Mr. Jerry Tucker, Code Enforcement, that's case if something goes on in the community, we need code enforcement, people come out in, in your businesses or something like that. Um, Parks and Recreation, Sabrina Barnes, Juan Mata is the Supervisor, Parks and Recreation. I know we have a lot of homeless in the parks and we're working on that, but this is the team that helps me out. These are our non-emergency numbers, this is my number at the top. We have flyers out in the lobby, so you, you can get all this out in the lobby, okay? Um, non-emergency for dispatch, Public Works for, that's for your trash. That's it for my homeless. We're gonna, um, go into question, I guess I can. This is about being counted, our 2020 census, what is it and why do we count? Be counted. Every 10 years, the US Census Bureau undertakes a man of the task counting all of the people living in the US and recording basic information such as, such as age, sex and race. The US founders thought this was a data who was important, so we've been doing it for a long time. Just, I know a lot of people don't count, but we do. I know we have a lot of people get scared because we have a lot of immigrants here in the city and they're not being counted. So we're gonna try to talk to our neighbors and, and, and figure out how we can get them more involved. Why is it important to be counted? There's federal funds, grants and support to states, counties and communities. Our community benefits from it, the most when the census counts everyone. When we respond to census, you help your community get its fair share for schools, hospitals, roads, public works and other vital programs. Thank you. Any other questions?
She has a very, very tough job that you call me on and she's, her and the officers are the one that interact face to face with hypodermic needles, knives, broken glass, et cetera. She also made reference to you regarding the most recent bulk pickup we had with multiple homeless encampments on 113th and Imperial Highway, so you'll see it off the Hollywood Park Freeway sign. Just to clean that up is an estimated cost in us $60,000 for the waste that we had to pick up after them. Now you know why it's important that when we do the US Census count, that you tell your neighbors, friends, family and loved ones to please fill out those forms. It is critical because it's those that need it the most or the less likely that will rise to the occasion to actually fill out the form so we can get the credit we need based on income base and the most help we need. Mental health is a challenge. Homeless people that used to have a job they relied on, all of a sudden they're, the company moves out of California, now they're jobless. Families that rely on one company to support husband and wife, they leave, now two, two paychecks are gone, how you make a house payment and a car note? That's why it's critical that when we talk about the US census and when you call me about homeless count, hold this group up in prayer, please. Now I see there was a few hands raised up, we'll take the first one right here, but if you would please, stand up. Stand up if you would please. All right, you got a leg brawl.
Uh, I live on Hudson, we've been living there since 19, I've been living there since 1980. But we do have a, a RV that's on our block and I was wondering, were you aware of it?
Is it, is it being used for living?
It's being used like they're using the rest of them for junk. I call it junk, but you know.
Okay, that may, see that, I need to get that information, more information from me because it could fall under another division called Code Enforcement.
Okay, my second, uh, one is we've been having people that comes out and sleep on our sidewalks, on Hudson.
Okay, um.
And it's coming from the same house that the RV is, is parked. They're coming out and they're sleeping on our sidewalk.
You can just give us a call, but if you go online to thecityofinglewood.org and you go up under the Police Department, we have a portal, thanks to Lieutenant Hurt, that's the homeless portal. So you can go in there and fill it out and it comes directly to me, my sergeant, the captains, the watch commanders, everybody get it and we have to respond to it. So if you can, you know, fill it out for me, okay? If not, you can give us a call and there's a paper outside and you can let us know and we'll put it on the board.
All right, next question or comment, way back over the hand raised. If you don't mind standing, we'd appreciate it if you can. Yeah, we're holding the mic, he holds the mic.
You mentioned that you wanted to get immigrants involved in the census. If they do become involved, how does that impact federal funds?
Not all of them, see, some of them are trying to get documented. We have a lot that are trying to get documented in Council Morales's district. So we're trying to become more involved so they'll know that we're here for them, right? So if they get involved, like you said, more people, more count, more money. So that's the way we need to get them involved. But they don't come to us a lot because they're scared of the law enforcement. So we're trying to become more transparent with them. So we're, we're gonna have more meetings over there.
One more question or comment, the young lady right here, and then we'll move on to the next presenter.
I was wondering if you need to correlate with the school district on your homeless count because the schools have to have information for their grants and federal funds and a lot of times the teachers can tell the kids are homeless when they're not really being reported or seen on the streets, the schools really see a lot.
That's a good question. Um, this year I had the opportunity to go to few of the unified school districts, few of the schools in the unified school district, and they did tell me that there was a lot of students that were homeless. But because the school district have their own, I'm pretty sure they're being counted or taken care of through their jurisdiction, I'm pretty sure that's how they're getting funded because they don't interact with us, it's totally separate. Um, a lot of the kids that are homeless do not live in Inglewood, actually. I found out a lot that weren't in Inglewood, um, from Hutno School and, um, I'm sorry, the school off of, um, Cetinella. A lot of kids over there, they were homeless. I tried to bridge the gap, but the council is dealing with that separate, unfortunately.
Okay, let's give her a hand please, if you would. So when, as your chairperson for the US Census 2010, it required a collaboration of block club captains, uh, Chamber of Commerce, a number of businesses, sororities, fraternities, to all roll up their sleeves and the Inglewood Unified School District to play a role because we tried our best to get the count. We also had to break down the fear factor of people saying, if I report that I'm not a US citizen, I'm gonna be deported. And that's one of the issues that the federal government right now is weighing on whether or not you have to declare yourself as a US citizen. But we must get the count, otherwise when you call me to say, I need help, if I don't have the budget, we don't have the money set aside, guess what? It becomes an issue. Furthermore, as soon as we start helping them, all of a sudden we start getting more because other cities are pushing them our way. So it's, it's an ongoing saga and that we are prepared to do what we can with the resources that we have. And you'll hear a little bit more in my comments about, uh, the affordable housing and the needs that we need. Moving on, um, I just want to acknowledge a couple other people and then this will be my last announcement. I want to recognize District Four Civil Service Border Review Commissioner Shebe Walton. If you recognize the standing, be stand. Uh, two strong block group organizations, Charles Cobb, Sixth Avenue. The other one is the biggest one throughout the Century Heights area, we know as Cheryl Okay, my turn. You know what, I didn't practice, so we'll see what happens. So everyone has their pens out, papers, so what do I always say? What's my favorite saying? Get your pen and paper and get ready to take notes because with, what's the highlight there? Knowledge, there is power. Knowledge, there is power. And particularly, we're gonna start off with job opportunities. So how many of you actually reach out to Ms. Matthews and I and say, I want to be added to your job listings? If not, if you have interest in that, make sure that you take time to let her know that I want to be on your job listing and I want your email address. We, we normally blast out new email job opportunities at least twice a month. And if you want to get caught up on what's going on, you know, the family, friends or loved ones that is having a challenge, we want to make sure that they're aware. Also in the flyers that is made available on that table, and there's a lot of flyers on that table. It may not all pertain to you, but it may pertain to your neighbor, friends, family or loved ones, so don't hesitate to take all of it, so that way you'll have it. But I clearly want to make sure, the one I always ask for you to take is the emergency numbers. When you call me up and say, there's a street light out, there's a pottle that needs to be filled, there is a, um, a issue involving a sidewalk, et cetera, there's different numbers that are available for you because not all of that issues are citywide. that are available for you because not all of that issues are citywide. And then when you find out that you can't handle it and they're not responsive, then by all means, we are definitely your source to call. I also want to let you know that we have a new website for, it's called the Alert, let me get this right. There's a new website, the city's website is www.cityofinglewood.org. www.cityofinglewood.org. There's a new section in there called the Alert Center. There's a new section called the Alert Center, but how do you find it? So if you click on, once you get to the city website, and I did it yesterday to make sure I'm saying it right, click on Residence, which is at the very top heading, Residence, that's who you are. The next section, click on Emergencies, Emergencies. And then finally, there's a section called Emergency Notifications. With that, you can then sign in with the use of your cell number to say, I want to be notified either by text or by email of the following categories: traffic alerts for forum events, filming, water main breaks, city and park recreation activities that go on throughout the city. And then, more importantly, what just happened to us recently, public works, street, and sidewalk impacts. So you'll have those available as well. Also, I want to talk regarding parking structure and mobilization, modernization of security, of, let me, parking structure number two. If everyone knows where the Inglewood Senior Center is located, on Locust and Queen, there is a parking structure that has been dilapidated just a half a block away. That parking structure is now under major remodel, major remodel to the point between the upgrades, between the ticket machine that you're going to pay to get in and out, the stairwell, modernizing the elevator, there'll be blue safety phones and alarm systems there, new bike racks that's going to be there as well. And more important, and also there'll be new signage and upgraded landscaping. And it used to be a haven for the homeless, but not anymore. So why don't you be aware of that one? In addition to that, I want to talk to you regarding the city's budget. For those that did not watch the city council meeting on February the 12th of 2019, I'm only going to give you a cursory review of what we addressed during the mid-quarter, the first quarter city budget. So if, you'll see only snippets of what I'm going to share with you, but if you want the detailed version, go to the city's website under the City Clerk's Department for Council Meetings. And then click on February 12, 2019 for more details. I want you to be made aware involving the first quarter general fund revenue. And before I do that, I want also to highlight the snapshot of economic indicators. This, what I'm about to share with you, covers from October 1st, 2018 to June 31st, 2019. This lets you know of a indicator for us of whether or not the city is in compliance or following our game plan on meeting the budget. You'll see that property taxes have increased by 6.2%. That's net payable value. Sales tax has increased by 37.5%, again, over the same period, prior period of last year. Building permits, people wanting to come and build things in the city has gone up from 93%. And then also, utility user taxpayers, those that are using cell phones and other electronic devices, it's went down by 6.6%. Business licenses gone up by 57.6%. And unemployment, it says regional unemployment down by 2%, but for Inglewood, we were at 7.5%. We're now down to 5.4. And then also, I talk about city expenditures, which I want you to be made aware of that. And to do that, you need to know about the money we spent in the first quarter versus the money we earned, where do we stand? So you can see that our revenue is 128 million 72,000, 128, yeah, million 72,451, but our expenditure is 128 million 16,272, which simply means we currently have a surplus of a little over 56,000. And that's only a quarter. And as time goes, that balance that we have eventually will be consumed to reach our standard with our balance of the budget that we have. You probably can't see this, so that's why it's critical that you may want to go to the city's website. I'm only highlighting one of those graphs. And it has to talk about streets and roadway, which is right in the middle. And if I do this right, you'll see it's right there. It talks about seven projects in construction. And you'll see that under design is six more. So when you heard the Public Works Director talk about the current streets, he highlights specifically at my request, the ones that are being done in District 4, and we're part of that seven. And then he also talked about those that are in design, which is our new one, which is Prairie, which is going to be from Imperial Highway to Manchester. Again, this is just a thumbnail of information. I want you to make sure to go to the city website so that way you'll be able to get the more detailed portion of that particular information. We're now going to talk about planning and economic development. So the first thing everyone keeps talking about, the stadium, the stadium, the stadium. What's going on with the stadium? Well, you may be surprised to know that the future NFL Stadium is still scheduled to open in the summer of 2020. When it does open, we have already approved by the NFL owners that have Super Bowl 2022. We're going to have the NCAA Championship College Football Game, the number one, number two team in the nation in 2023. We will have the opening, and I believe the closing ceremonies of the Summer Olympics in 2028. Also, in plan check that we're working on as we speak, there's going to be some housing units there, which will be 314 that is scheduled of apartment units. We've already got the NFL studio projects, so the NFL Network, those that watch NFL Network at home, they're actually coming right to Inglewood at that location. And then also, there's over 516,000 square feet of retail that's going to take place. But more, I want to make sure you understand that on the corner will be a new cinema theater that will be anchoring to that. So get aware as to all the things that's going to happen regarding that. I also want you to be made aware that currently, the roof skeleton is being assembled of the, for the stadium and that it's stand to be completed by June 2019. So right now, it's a frame. Soon you're going to see the actual top that you see right there as well. And that the next thing we need to talk about has to do with opportunities to be able to work at that location. In the hallway, there's more flyers that's going to talk about job opportunities for the Hollywood Stadium, which is called the L.A. Stadium Job Information and Resource Fair Flyer. So it is scheduled for Thursday, April 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Rogers Park, which is 400 Beach Avenue. If you know anyone that's looking for construction work, and we're talking union-scale work, you encourage them to make sure they apply and follow the guidelines that's in the flyer. So some people have heard the phrase Murphy's Bowl, but in essence, it's really the future Clippers Arena. And I thought you would like to be able to get an update as to what's going on. So again, there's a flyer out there, and actually a news article by the L.A. Times called "The Clippers Remain Serious About Building Their Now L.A. Arena in the City of Inglewood." And so if you're interested in that information, again, it's at the information table. We're currently in chief negotiations with Steve Ballmer, the owner of the NFL, NBA Clippers. The mayor and the council, as of August of last year, actually, August of 2017, have gone into an exclusive negotiations to talk to them regarding property that we own by the City of Inglewood. And that they plan to build upon approval, the state-of-the-art NBA professional basketball arena with auxiliary uses. It will have also up to 20,000 seats. 36, we're still negotiating for up to 36 months. And they were required to provide us $1.5 million as a deposit, non-refundable. So we have that for sure. And then also, I want you to be made aware, this property in question is land that the city and the redevelopment agency owned of the city that we've owned for decades and no property taxes. Because we owned it, therefore, we don't get it. So this development, the site you're seeing right there at 102nd and Prairie, is part of the future development of the NBA Clippers Arena, practice field, and administrative facilities. And we have pledged, and we continue to hold our ground, that we will have no residential or church properties in this study area. So we want to dismiss that rumor that people keep saying that, no, the city is in cahoots with the Clippers and they're going to acquire all those apartments that's in the area, the houses that are on Doty between 102nd and 104th, and the church is also on 104th. No, no, no. So we want to make sure that you know, as residents of the city, that no, we do not have that, have that interest. Next, we'll talk about the Inglewood Economic Indicator. Again, a flyer is outside. I'm highlighting a few of those items. I think it's critical for you to know that 17% increase in the citywide sales tax growth is a major contributor by Market Street retailers, stores coming in town. It had to do with the Forum, Manchester Corridor, Prairie Corridor, and Village at Century has made the significant contribution. In addition, the city's sales tax revenues from the state in development have contributed more than $1.9 million to the city. How is that? Because the city, and we negotiated, we said, raw material, where as possible, you're to get it locally. So you don't see it, but there's a little small store that is on the property of Hollywood Park. And the products, the raw material products come from Home Depot, and we have two of them. Nine other Home Depots throughout Southern California are now supplying the raw material to those two stores, which then comes through our little store on the campus, on the property, and we get the sales tax. That's, makes a significant contribution, as you now see. I also want to talk about the Inglewood One Stop for Construction Hiring Program. From January 2017 through December 2018, there was 625 apprenticeship placements, and of those, 54% were African-Americans, 43 Latino, and 3% other. Also, directly coming to the site, there was 143 that was hired, and of those 143, 62% were African-American, 25% Latino, and 13% other. I also want to arrest the issue regarding the affordable housing projects. There have been a big issue about why isn't there enough housing to handle the low and, low and low-income families. And there's articles throughout the state of California that says housing is a major problem statewide. Inglewood is doing our fair share. Currently, we have several projects in the works with L.A. County and Metro. We're in the process of constructing a four-story mixed-use building that also will handle some commercial. 101 affordable apartment units will be located at 923 East Redondo Beach. So think of Redondo Beach and Florence in that area. 38 units of market rate and affordable apartments that will include at least 11 affordable units will be located at 921 Edgewood Street. 116 multiple-family units that's being developed with six units of affordable housing is located between 417 to 433 Centinela Avenue. So note that. I want to talk to you regarding the retail development. And people have always heard about, when is norms coming? So it's been officially announced that it's open in the summer of 2019. You have no idea with all the permits and things that are required, particularly when it's a restaurant, and you're going to deal with food items and handle that hot grease, etc., how there's a lot of permits and things got to be done before it ultimately takes place. But with the help of our police liaison, Mr. Aaron Elsie, we was able to get a picture to reconfirm that, yes, it's coming. Yes, it's coming. So we're all excited about that. However, we also understand that between the contract agreements and the permits issues, we also have to get ready for pre-construction of the, of the activities. And you go in that same area that is immediately off Imperial Highway, that is just east of the Citibank Building, and you'll see it's now chain-linked off as we're now preparing to get ready for that location. So be aware of that. Other developments, Arco Gas Station, AM PM Food Market, again, giving an update on that one. So it's currently designed to have a 1,850-square-foot, single-story service station. It'll have 12 gas pumps, an AM PM food mark, and it's located at 3611 West Imperial Highway. And everyone knows Yukon Avenue and 111th Place. We all know that northwest corner. But you need to know also, it's currently under site plan review, and the building permits to be issued has already started. But before they can do that, now comes Air Quality, South Coast Air Quality Management District and says, before you put new tanks in the ground, and before you're talking about bringing chemicals in that area, there is a special notification that has to go out. It's called the Notice of Intent of Issue a Permit to Construct. That permit has now gone out on January 25, 2019. It's out for the public to make comments, and they have up to 30 days to submit your comments. Again, if you're interested, flyers are out there as well to give you more details about it. The construction is scheduled to begin as long as we're able to get the, the comments in within, should be through by now, February 25. So that being said, we will be able to start construction on March 2019. And the weather permitting, it should be concluded by October 2019. So you have that one. There's another retail store in town. And I want to now welcome you to Winchell's, Winter Schnitzel. Winchell, you're listening, Winter Schnitzel. How many remember that used to be the former Burger King site? Oh, yeah. The old former Burger King site on Century and Crenshaw. It opened up on January 11, 2019. Again, the address is 3104 West Century Boulevard. Again, we talk about economic developments. This, not all these are in our district, but you need to know what's going on citywide because if I ask you to raise your hands, I bet you I'll have some people raise their hands and say, I don't live in District 4, but I live in the city and I know, I want to know what's going on as well. And so I added a few more flies to make sure I incorporate that. So if we look at Fairview Heights and downtown Inglewood, there's going to be two metro stations. And the two metro stations is going to be off of Market Street in Florence, and the other one off near Redondo, the one I just told you about, Redondo West Boulevard, 64th and Florence at that location. So we have two light rail stations that are going to come in, and they're scheduled to open by mid-2020. Now, how many of you remember the, it's called the D3 Site? The D3 Site is the location on La Brea and Florence downtown. Used to where the old Cadillac dealership used to be. Again, I'm dating myself. But if you know where La Brea and Florence, it is the southeast corner of that intersection. And it's designed to have 235 residential units, 45,000 square feet of retail, onsite 585 parking spaces, and it's scheduled for the construction to start, weather permitting, this late spring of this year. With the understanding that the goal is to try to have it completed no later than November 2021. Another project, how many know Grace Park? Grace Park. So if I tell you another name, let's see if you guess. Daniel Freeman Hospital. Ahhh. So this is the new development that's going to So this is the new development that's going to come, with two hundred and twenty-six townhome units. Demolition has already been approved, arbaces is already there to make sure some of the trees are preserved, and that project is subject to be completed by two thousand and twenty. Yeah, you know all these fancy names, but what is that, where's that really located, huh? Okay. Let's try another one. How many knows where the LA Philharmonic Youth Orchestra is going to be? The old Burger King site in front of City Hall. That's the building they're going to re-modify, and even date myself even further, I may remember Security Pacific Bank, National Bank. So that's twenty-five thousand square feet Youth Orchestra Hall and Performance Space, and is designed by the well-renowned artist Frank Gehry, and they're planning to open that in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. Are you getting anything out of this? Okay, I, I just want to make sure that I'm giving you enough information, that you can say that, you know, it was worth my time and effort to come out here late at night with the threat of rain, in order to be, to get this information to share with others and be knowledge, because with knowledge, there is what? Power. Okay, let's try another one. Girl Scouts of American Region Headquarters, they're located at four twenty-three North La Brea Avenue. They came from the Marina Del Rey, and they represent forty-five thousand Girl Scouts. And we had the grand opening this past Sunday on February twenty-fourth. Next project, we're going to talk a little bit about Parks and Recreation Services. How many of you know where Center Park is located? There's only one public park in District Four, and that's Center Park. So if you know where it's located, it's, for those that don't, it's right by Worthington Elementary School, that is immediately west on Yukon Avenue, between a hundred and eleventh street and a hundred eleventh place. So, we actually had some work done to it, and what we had done was that we improved a, a major operation at that park. We now have a walking track with eight exercise stations, and a new apparatuses for tots, as well as a new rubberized, I'm sorry, rubberized platform underneath the, all the swings and the other apparatuses that are there. We also have new gazebo's with three different gazebo's having barbecue grills, and you can set up meat with your families, et cetera. But we discovered something, that there was a manufacturer defect regarding the playground surfacing. We, we're fortunate that the material was still under warranty, and everything must be and will be replaced at the expense of the contractor. Due to the rain, it was supposed to have been done this month, but now it's going to be scheduled for next month, again, weather permitting. Now I want to talk to you a little bit about Public Works. So, with Public Works, you already had a presentation, and I asked for him to stay focused on street items. I now want to talk about things that are around the streets, which happens to be with Southern California Edison's pole replacement project at a hundred and third and Prairie Avenue. So, at that particular location, Southern California Edison has extended cable upgrades and pole replacement projects across the city, and most recently in District Four was that location. The challenge became as to when the work could be done. They could not do it during the day, because, and I'll share with you, their, their work actually started at nine PM on Thursday, February twenty-first, and they finished Friday morning at four AM, February twenty-second. And because some of the pole work that had to be conducted during overnight, it was due to the heavy drawl of the circuits during the day, and it made it unsafe for the workers, as well as the public in the surrounding area. So that's what happened. Now for a new item, and some of my neighbors came to me and shared with me, Southern California Edison also has a new contract service. And this service trims trees. Trims the trees in front of your property, known as our, our city trees. And just recently, they came and they were cutting trees, and they were only doing like crew cuts, just straight across. But they wouldn't go and do the umbrella part. And they said, because we're protecting the power line at the very top of that pole. So if you see a tree that has got a flat top, and it's still wide, then you know that that was not done by, by the city, but the contract service by that organization. Okay. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the signage for U-turn, and no U-turn sign, northbound on Crenshaw Boulevard and Century Boulevard. How many remember a few years ago, I was instrumental in getting funding, so when you go northbound on Crenshaw, and as you approach a hundred and fourth, we now have dual left-hand turn lanes? It's really interesting how people just are zombies and realize, okay, well, this is my left-hand turn, I'm supposed to turn, but can I make you a U-turn, or can I not make a U-turn? You tell me. Ironically enough, the one, I'll use my little arrow here, this sign right here says, no U-turns. This sign here says, U-turns. So, that became an issue, and I want to thank the residents that brought it to our attention, because even Public Works staff was surprised when we found out. So the answer is, the U-turn is being removed, this one right here, and is being replaced with this sign, that you can, those that are in the center divider, you can make the U-turn to go southbound again, back on Crenshaw. Just so you know. All right. Next item, we'll talk about the damage to a handrail of the pedestrian walkway, Crenshaw Boulevard and a hundred and second street. I just had this done, again, less than two years ago. So if you're walking on Crenshaw going northbound, and you're approaching Food for Less, on that side of the street, just, just north of a hundred, a hundred and second, there used to be a stairwell to go up there. Well, I had a number of people that with handicaps said, I can't make it. So I created a, spent the money for a Z-shaped type cement rail, a ramp, with bars. Well, what happened was, we had an accident at the intersection, and they literally severed the top bar of the railing. And now, these are safety hazards. So we literally had now closed that location, so it can't be used for pedestrian use at all, due to public safety. And yes, we will be looking for the person that created the damage, but in the meantime, we have to also be, be mindful of the public not to get hurt and armed, because those are sharp spears, and we don't want anyone to get, get hurt in any way. Now, let's talk about another issue. Twice a year, we do Operation Clean Sweep. It simply means that you get a chance to go in your garage, and you get a chance to pull out stuff out of your closet, and say, I want to bring it to curbside. And on this particular time, we want to make sure you get the handouts that's out there, and it tells you, Operation Clean Sweep will be starting Saturday, March thirtieth, and it will run for five consecutive Saturdays. You need to make sure which Saturday is your pickup time. You also need to make sure that you know what items are acceptable, unacceptable, and the maximum number of bags or containers that are allowed, and the weight of the units. So, it's right there at your fingertips, all you have to do is go get that item. There's been a, a lot of accumulation of some of us known as hoarders, that it's time to clean house. Particularly after April fifteenth, we'll have more paper that we need to bring out for shredding. So, we want you to be made aware of that, and that being the case, there's a new notification that there's going to be free document shredding. Everyone knows where Inglewood High School is. Right in front of Inglewood High School, that street is called Gravilla. And from Saturday, March sixteenth, from nine to one, bring your items, don't have to get out of the vehicle, they'll get out, they will get them for you, and then they will make sure that you have them as well. And get, get you in and get you out. Another item, Crenshaw Imperial Branch Library. Everybody knows where the library is, right? Okay, a hundred eleventh place in Crenshaw. So, there's been some issues raised, that we're having a challenge concerning the time the library's open, and we now have new parking meters at that location, and we have meters there by design, because we're having homeless and other people's camping overnight. And it became a problem. But at the same time, we've recognized that the after-school programs, the evening hours when you may want to come to the library, or on weekend, particularly Saturday, that the meters have been a problem, because you may not have the funds to pay. So, we are now in the process of reducing those hours for operation, and increase the amount of free parking at that location. Particularly Mondays through Thursday, after four PM, and all day Saturday until four o'clock, that there will be free parking. The meters will not be enforced. Also, we also are having issues at our, at our libraries. Can you imagine being harassed while you're simply trying to read a book? And people are approaching you in an unethical and professional way? So we now have to have security services that is now being implemented at the main library, just off of Manchester, behind City Hall, and also at our library at the Crenshaw Imperial Branch. Again, with knowledge, there's power. So, again, that's just our, just our library, that you all know. And also, you may not realize it, but there's special facade remnants that's up there involving the heritage of the city. And so you may want to go and look at those as, as well, if you haven't, are not aware of that. I want to talk a little about our, our area of the Inglewood Unified School District. So before I, I get started in that, I want everyone to realize that for sixteen years, I've been your council member. A body can only take so much. Of those sixteen years, we just celebrated our fifteenth consecutive toy food drive that we've had with your blessing and support. This year, in fact, it was interesting how we mushroomed from maybe just a few families and a half a dozen families, and it kept getting bigger and bigger. Well, I'm proud to announce that we blessed three hundred and fifty Inglewood residents, including students from several District Four elementary public schools, their siblings, students attending the Inglewood Child Development Center, their siblings, there's children-at-risk teenage parents attending the Alta Vista Innovative High School, which is the second floor at the Citibank Building. We blessed grandparents raising grandchildren, foster children, their families, and Inglewood seniors that are on fixed income and said, I'd like to get a gift for my grandchildren, but I don't have the money, because I'm on stable income, fixed income. And thanks to you being a, a holiday sponsor, you made the difference. Give yourselves a hand. Now let's talk about another subject involving the school district. Morningside High School. There has, I've received a number of phone calls from you advising me that, I have heard, I have heard, that the NFL has strong interests in wanting to acquire the Morningside High School as a future practice training location for either the LA Rams and the LA Clippers. Is that true? Write this down. This is not true. This is not true. In fact, Inglewood Unified School District has no plans to relinquish that campus, and it will remain as the Inglewood Unified School District campus. In addition to that, they just did a special groundbreaking ceremony for the new Woodworth-Monroe TK VIII Academy on, in January twenty nineteen, on which they're renovating that site, and that will include a new majoral classroom building, along with overall improvements. And they, the game plan for the school district is to have that completed by the fall of two thousand and nineteen. So, they too recognize that they need to consolidate and do deferred maintenance and get it brought up to speed, and also identify that this will be a better opportunity to use proper resources of their dollar, so, just so you know of that. Now I want to talk about the, the Office of Emergency Services. So, in the lobby area, on the tables, there are a number of brochures. Just like when you are a disciple of Christ and issues of life come upon you, you don't call the minister and say, I got a nine-one-one situation. If you can't get on your knees and don't know the word that's within, heaven help you. So, the Emergency Services Information Brochures is there to help you in advance for things, including all the way from earthquake preparedness to information for seniors. So, I encourage you to make sure that you get those brochures as soon as possible. I had the un-good pleasure of being on the one-on-one freeway, passing Santa Barbara and Monsito, and being stranded on the one-on-one freeway because of mudslides for over half an hour. It is real. And every time I see it raining, I, all I can think is, Lord have mercy on that, on those families who's already lost everything, and I'm just trying to pass through. And even then, I had to be careful that I wasn't a victim, because vehicles in front of us spun out, lost control, hit the rail, bounced back into the traffic, and then ultimately ended up back toward the railing, but there was so much mud, it elevated it so it was completely off the wheels. So, when you hear about emergency preparedness, et cetera, please get those flyers and make sure that you and your family are prepared. How many like to help others that are in need? Or remember those that gave their lives for us? So I am one of those individuals that believe in giving it myself, and I welcome you to join me at the Inglewood Park Cemetery for the Veterans Grave Decoration Ceremony that we're going to have, and that we are in the process of getting geared up to put the flags, the American flags on graves at the Inglewood Park Cemetery, and we want to do it in, in advance before Memorial Day weekend hits. There's flyers out there, I encourage you, if you're interested to join us, that you please take the time to make sure that you, you get those as well. And it does require for RSVP. And the way that we, it works, we volunteers wear whatever comfortable clothes you want to wear, weather permitting, may need a hat or umbrella, but we have, we have a continental breakfast before we begin, and then our group each has a section in the cemetery that we then walk out and identify where the graves are located for the ones that fought the good fight of fate. So, I'm hopefully, can I count on you some volunteers in District Four? All, all right. So the, the flyer says, it's going to be Saturday, May twenty-fifth, has not identified the exact time yet, they will give that to us at a later date, and when they give it to me, if you're on my email address, or my email blast, I will make sure that you get that information. Particularly, you, when you call them to RSVP, they should be able to let you know as well. There's also an issue that I want to share with you, that there's been a request of wanting to see the Town Hall meeting via the city's website, and I told you about the YouTube link, Mr. Aaron Elsie, who's our police liaison, is our police community center, that it'll be at the ICOP Center, again, there'll be two of them for a free checkout. Okay. Finally, I just want to thank everyone for your time to listen to me regarding, for, for regarding the, my presentation. We have one more presenter before we go, and also, each one of you should have received a ticket. So, at the very end of the last presentation, and again, I brought me some officers, so I am armed and dangerous, and I, they are safeguarding my raffle items that will, that we go, and they will agree to relinquish them after they do their presentation, okay? All right. Now, I get many, many phone calls regarding issues of life, and I am just your resource. I am your point person, and I, I disseminate that information to other departments that are the experts. I repeatedly have issues brought to my attention that involves public safety. Particularly with the use and services of code enforcement, as well as the Inglewood Police Department. You heard a little bit earlier today regarding code enforcement with reference to the homeless encampments. We also bring it to my attention about people converting garages, people parking in the grass, those kind of things. But now, I want you to speak to the individuals that literally deal with life-threatening issues. Particularly if you have invested in a home, vested in a vehicle, and all of a sudden you come outside to go to work and find out your window's busted, or your car's gone, or you go to work and come back and your front door's open, that who do you call? The Inglewood Police Department. So I have not one, but two captains that have offered to join me, along with their officers, to help me give you some statistics, and also be available to answer some of the key questions you may have, and I purposely gave ample time for them, because I know you have questions. So, Captain Ed Ridens and Captain Mark Freed, if you please join me. Give it up. Give it up! And while they're coming up, I want you to know, everything that I've shared with you, it came from you that you wanted me to look up. And then, when we have the town hall meeting, it's just a report out. And so, now, we're going to report out with the police department. Gentlemen?
No, you go. You first? We're going to argue in front of you. Hi, ladies and gentlemen, we're very happy to be here. The councilman always gives me, he keeps looking at his watch, and he holds up the sign, "Hurry up." So, we're, I'm going to move quickly. Yeah, it's in front of me now, and he's going to, with a big hook, he's going to pull us off the stage and get us out of the way. I put these stats up here for you, and I'll explain them a little bit. These are, and I'll talk about this, and I'll be able to answer some questions. I know you have a lot of questions, but I'll move through this pretty quick. I've got some slides. Some of it is about recruitment, just so your friends and family, you can pass that on to them. And then, I'll talk a little bit about what the data says and some of the, I'll hit some of the points that I, I read a lot of crime reports. I'm the commanding officer of the detective bureau, so the reason I'm in plain clothes is all the detectives in the police department work for me. So, all the guys in uniform work for Captain Ridens, and all the ones in, all the detectives work for me. So, when the police officer comes out and takes your crime report and handles the preliminary investigation, that report's entered digitally and it goes upstairs to the detective bureau, and then the supervisors that work for me screen the cases and then assign those cases to detectives to do more detailed follow-up criminal investigations. So, they work in, the uniform guys work to solve the case in the field, and then my guys and gals work to try to find these bad guys down the road. Okay? To try to give you an idea of what we do. So, we work in partnership, hand in hand. The work they do in the field, the uniform police officers, the detectives in suit and ties work to try to solve it on the backend. Okay? So, and this data comes from all of that. So, where I get my data from is where, whenever a police officer goes out and takes a crime report, so let's say there's a burglary at your neighbor's house, they call the police, they come out, they take the report, they go back in their radio car, they sit down and they start typing that report. It goes in digitally, it goes into a system, and it's all tracked. So, I can look at it in real time. Every 24 hours, it dumps into a database. I can look at it and see, and that's where we generated the numbers. Just before I came here tonight, we pulled out the raw data, so that's actual numbers from today, year-to-date compared 2019 to 2018. So, as you can see, whenever you see a minus and the crime's down, that's good. We like down crime. And, and don't get me wrong, zero's the best number. I'll say right now, you're going to hear me talk about crime, how we investigate crime and do these things, but I would prefer there be zero. That's, that's our goal, just so you know. The Inglewood Police Department's goal is zero crime in Inglewood. There's no acceptable level to us except zero. So, that's our goal every day. That's what we work for, the police officers in the uniform and the detectives that work for you. I have conversations every single day with the men and women of the department, and it's all about getting those numbers down, as low to zero, down to zero as we can. So, obviously homicide year-to-date in Council District 4, zero. Last year was zero at the same time. There was a, there was a homicide at UConn 104th at Christmas time. You both saw that on TV. We have solved that case, and we, we've arrested both the suspects responsible for that crime. I'll show you the, the news release at the end. It's on here. But that elderly woman was killed out here and robbed, and the suspects fled the jurisdiction. They fled out of state, they went to Nevada, then to Arizona, and then to Texas. They were arrested in Texas trying to steal a vehicle there. And so, they're waiting extradition from Texas to Arizona, then from Arizona, they'll come back to California, and we'll put them on trial. That's what we'll end up doing. So, we're very proud of that. We spent hundreds of hours on that case and had teams of detectives working that nonstop from the time at Hampton because that's the commitment we have to getting this job done. At the police department, we're not interested in excuses. It's results we're interested in, and the way we do that is by catching these people, and that's what we do. So, we're proud of that. So, thank you for your support because we can't do it without you, and that's what it comes down to. So, these numbers are all down across the board. You'll see an increase in larceny. Now, larceny is theft, and that isn't just one area. Theft could be, there's a lot of commercial properties in the district, and so, any place you have businesses, you have shoplifting, and so, we, that's how we stat that. So, we're attributing a lot of that increase to that. But there is a, I read a lot of crime reports, and I get a lot of crime reports briefed to me. That's the nature of what we do in the detective bureau. We read all the reports, decide if we have patterns or series, or someplace we can focus our efforts, or we have the same offenders committing crimes, so we can focus our attention on them. But when we go through this, we look at the larceny crimes. Patrol Bureau does a pretty good job of trying to deter that as best they can, but a lot of times, these are crimes of opportunity. I read a lot of reports where your neighbors and friends and family members leave car doors unlocked. We make it easy for these folks to steal from us. Please, pass it around the neighborhood, talk to everybody about locking car doors. Some of these crooks will walk down the street, and they'll just pull the doors as they walk down the block. Soon as they find one, they've got something out of it, boom, there's your larceny stats right there. So, they go up. So, we're trying to get those under control. That also means you call us when you see something. You see something suspicious, people don't belong, you don't recognize them, they're behaving suspiciously, or they're grabbing car doors, call us. We'll come out and deal with it. That's what we do. And we'll go talk to them, maybe we catch them in between. We do an FI card on them, which is a, we get their information down, put it in the computer system, and they say, "You know what? I'm not going to do this in Inglewood. It's too dangerous. I'm going to go to Hawthorne, or go over to Lawndale, or, no offense to the mayor of Lawndale, wherever he is. We love you, but we'd, if I can't catch a mayor, I'm going to move him out and get him somewhere else." That's the way we look and do business. So, we, the violent crime, that number, 35% down, is a year-to-date number now. Again, we're in the first quarter, and so, I'm going to knock on wood here because we want to keep those numbers way down, and we're working every day to do that. I know Captain Ridens will probably talk about that a little bit. But overall, crime is down in District 4. We're proud of that. I taught, I highlighted that murder case, which is important to us, and I wanted to talk, I talked a little bit about that, what you can do to stop that theft. Some of the petty theft is lock those doors, okay? And at home and at night, how many of you turned your lights on before you left to come here, the front porch light? Yeah, but there's a whole bunch of you that didn't. My house looks like the Christmas Day parade. I, I'm telling you, I turn all the lights on. I put those LED bulbs in it. They draw very little wattage. I know those fluorescent bulbs are ugly, but spend a little money on those, the LED lights and turn all your lights on at night. Leave a light on. I'm telling you, burglars and crooks will go elsewhere. They will find a dark house that doesn't have the lights on. If the whole block is lit, they will move on to some other community. And I, I read these reports, my eyes are crossed from reading reports, and I'm telling you, this is the pattern in every, almost every single one of them. It is usually a RMAC, and if they target it, it's a target of convenience, and it makes it easy. And bad guys love the darkness. They love, they do not like light. Light is a bad thing for them. People can see them, they pay attention, and they call the police when they, when they're in the light. So, turn your lights on. And the other thing is robberies. Robberies are down in District 4, but that's not the case all over the city. What we're having is who sells things on the internet? Anybody? Okay. It tends to be super young folks, millennial types. I'm not one of those. I'm an older guy, and I don't sell, I usually throw things away. A lot of these folks sell, right? Try to make money. I just throw it away. Money goes into the trash can with me. But they, they sell things on the internet, Letgo, OfferUp, Facebook, right? If your, if your friends or family or neighbors are doing that, please tell them to pick a designated spot to do that that's safe. Because what happens on the internet is they're meeting up in places and they're getting robbed there. So, they're, they're picking, they're going into neighborhoods they're not familiar with, and they're being set up. The Inglewood Police Department has a designated safe space at the police station. It is on the west side of the police building, right, Gravilla and Regent, right there by the courthouse across the street, in the big courtyard there. There's a big sign, and it has, we have a, we have a high-definition camera there. So, you can go out there, your friends and family can arrange, meet on the internet and say, "Hey, I'll sell you anything you want. We're going to meet at the police station." And if they're serious, they'll come to the police station. If they're crooks, they'll probably go elsewhere, okay? But it's, we, a lot of this is opportunity and people not making good decisions, and we don't want anybody to get hurt. And if something happens out there, the police, the police officers are right there. There's a camera that records what's going on, and so, we're there to support and protect you, and that's what we want to do. So, talk to your friends and family. It's probably your grandchildren, your kids. You're going to have this conversation with them. They do this all the time. They sell things on the internet constantly. They're exchanging and bartering back and forth. Tell them to do it in a safe spot. If not Inglewood, there's other places all over, the South Bay, if they live in other communities, they could, but anybody could go to the Inglewood Police Station and do this, okay? So, anyhow, I think that's what I wanted to talk about quickly if we go through. Aaron, I'm going to try to do this, man. I'm not sure if I can figure this out. I got it. If you want to, if your friends and family want to join the police department, there is a, you go to the cityofinglewood.org website. Everything's internet now, right? Got it. If you go to the cityofinglewood.org website, and you hit, click to join the team, and it'll take you. This is basically the basics of how we, you get hired as a police officer, or any job for that matter in the police department. It starts with submitting an application, but for a police officer in particular, you fill out the application online, and then we, you give your email address, and we invite you to the testing process. So, just have your friends and family go to the, go to the website and log on there. Click, there's a big icon that says, "Join the Team." But we do the written examination. It gives you a little bit idea of what it's like, and the physical agility test, I'm reading it right now, I'm getting tired looking at it. Right? You got to run a mile and a half and do a bunch of sit-ups and push-ups and pull-ups. Yeah, it's been a long time, right? Unless I fall out of my office chair and slip on a cup of coffee, it's very unlikely I'm going to have to do any of this. What's scary is the city pays me for my brain, which is frightening, isn't it? These are the dates. These are some of the dates. We test every month, so we're hiring, we're actively hiring. We love hiring friends and family from the community. Please talk to your, anybody you think suitable. There is a background check. It tends to be rather difficult. You want good police officers, and we do a thorough and significant background check. And we look at everything in somebody's life and decide who to hire based on the results of that. Anyhow, this was the Christmas Day homicide out here. I talked briefly about it, but we're very proud of catching them, and they're, we're hoping that they go to prison for a very long time. It's absolutely unacceptable, and I want you to know the men and women that work for the detective bureau and the ones that work in the uniforms for the patrol bureau. We spend, I know sometimes government employees get a bad rap, you know, it can be that way, and with us, I can tell you that if you were a fly on the wall in my office, we have conversations about how we make this community safer every single day. And what the detectives come to work every day and give you, they work 10-hour shifts in the detective bureau. They spend their workday from the minute they walk in the door to the minute they leave at night, trying to make that happen for you. And listen, I, I'm available to you. You can email me. I'll be here afterwards to talk to you. I'm happy to answer any of your questions about any of the issues we discuss, any issue you want to talk about, really. So, anyhow, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Ridens.
Thank you, Captain Freed, councilman, District 4. Appreciate you. I did bring some of Inglewood's finest with me. You know, as I sat here and listened tonight about the, you know, your story on, with the mudslide up there, some of our officers out here working tonight, we actually went up there as part of the Area G contingent that represents the South Bay to go out and assist those that were stranded and help those, those families they need up there. And that's Officer Salsito, Officer Corden McKenzie. Did have a couple more of our finest. Obviously, you already know Sergeant Blairlock, a future executive officer over here, Sergeant Meeks, and executive officer, as you may know, Lieutenant Cardell Hurt. One of the things that I gathered through this, you can see how much effort goes into a lot from the city side, the council. This is really a giant team here for you, for everybody in this room. And this was kind of the premise of what we kind of wanted to do tonight with regards to, you know, the stats are good, we're doing some excellent work there. We have raised the level of professionalism and organization within our department, and we're reaching there, but we're not there yet. We've got some work to do. And with that, we'd like to actually hear from you, how we could improve ourselves, how we could do better for you in the community. And with that, not only that, I wanted to be a little more interactive. I know we're short in time, but this is where we're kind of going through this because I do want this a little bit more interactive. We have some of our fine officers. They're going to go around with post-it notes. We've got different categories out here that may affect you personally, quality of life concerns, which could be some noise, people working on their cars, violent crimes, which has to deal with, you know, anything from human trafficking, that's a concern, you've seen that lately, robberies, aggravated assaults, anywhere from property crimes to narcotic activity, anything that you may, may affect you throughout your quality of life. With that, some of the post-it notes that are coming around, try to think of the most important things or something that we could do to improve. You don't have to put your, you can put your name, obviously, but if you have an email address, we want some of my staff to actually reach out, get in touch with you on a more personal level, to actually kind of adjust and address some of the issues within your particular district. What else with that? Yeah, so those, some of those will come around now. Those that you can't, what are officers here to actually, you can engage with, and if you have any issues or some comments, or we can actually write them down, we'll take them back to the department, and we'll follow up with you and address your concerns. One other thing. Senders team, that's another part of the team with, I met. Heard of the Community Police Academy? We have it. She wanted, she forgot, but she wanted me to mention that we have another Community Police Academy starting in April to June this year, and it's on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. So, you got the flyers out there? So, if you're interested, the flyer's out there for that, okay? And then, if I could, Cardell, could you step up real quick? We've got some more interactive-type platforms we'd like to discuss.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lieutenant Hurt. I'm Captain Ridens' assistant, basically. I just want to ask you guys a question. How many of you go on vacation for about three or four days or longer? Just raise your hand. Okay? How many of you notified us that you went on vacation? That's amazing because you have a free service with Inglewood Police Department, so that's what I'm up here to talk to you guys about. We have forms online that you can basically fill out. They're all online on the Inglewood Police Department's website. You fill them out, it sends an email to everyone that works the streets, the supervisors, and they will get notified when you go on vacation and when you want officers to drive by your home. We also have extra patrol requests online. So, if you have an issue and you just want some extra patrol because I heard somebody say that people sleeping out on the sidewalk and stuff, you can fill out an extra patrol request, or you can call us, and that's a way of getting us to come by more often. If your house is getting fumigated and you, it's going to be an extended period of time, you can fill out the vacation request or the extra patrol request. We'll come by and check your home. We also have traffic enforcement on, online, and we also have the homeless encampments online. Okay? So, I just want to put those services out. I'm in charge of social media. I don't know if everybody has it or not. We have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We post a lot of stuff on there about these services, such as the OfferUp site that Captain Freed mentioned, where you can come to our police station and do your transaction. A lot of this stuff is published online on our social media site, so please go out and follow us. You'll make me happy when I see that extra person, you know, get, get those extra followers, and it makes the chief happy to see that, you know, we have everybody in the community supporting us. So, once again, Inglewood Police Department website, we have a lot of forms online for you to go and fill out. Everyone gets notified when you go on vacation, extra patrol, traffic requests, and homeless encampments.
How soon are they reviewed? How frequently are they reviewed?
As soon as you hit enter, it goes, it goes through to emails. He, he said, "How soon are they reviewed?" As soon as you hit enter and submit, it goes to everyone, okay? It goes to their email address directly. It goes directly to the watch commander. We have four other lieutenants that work. They're in charge of, you know, the different beats and districts. It goes directly to them, too. They take ownership of what happens in their area, and they ensure that officers go out and do these extra patrol and vacation checks. If you do these things, you know, typically, the officers do get back with you. They'll email you back if you include an email, or if you include a phone number, they'll, they'll call you and say, "Hey, we went by, everything's okay," or they'll leave a business card in your mail tray and say, "Hey, we came by and made sure everything's okay." Okay? So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I can, I can be up here for a minute, but I don't have that much time. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Man, slow your roll, brother. We're now gonna take questions and, and comments. This is the reason why I had all these officers here, these are the brains, these are the experts. You don't want a point guy that says, "Okay, I'll let them know, and all I can do is just pass on the message." Now you get the answers. So let's, with the microphone, hello? Right up front. Can you please hold your hand, hold your hand up in the air, if you don't mind standing, we'd like to for you, if you can, we'd appreciate it.
I can.
Your hand, stand, thank you.
Hi, I was wondering, with the incidents that they were having in Inglewood, not so much in District 4, with the shooting, you know, going by, shooting the cars, was that the capture, was that the, the guys that were in Inglewood that were doing the same thing?
Yeah, we, we believe that the same suspect. Yeah, we have evidence that they're the same suspect. LAPD, we're working with LAPD detectives on that, they committed a lot more crimes over in LAPD's area, and they sort of wandered over to Inglewood and got us a little bit, but we're on to them, they got arrested, we're working to prosecute them, and we're gonna try to file every single one of those as a felony vandalism case. So there's 80 or 90 of those, that's, they're, they're gonna be in trouble.
I'm gonna have a fumigation.
Yes, ma'am.
I am gonna have a fumigation, and I'm very nervous about it, so I would like to call Inglewood Police to come around, day and night, because I really don't see them too much.
Okay, that's not a problem, like I said, if you want, you can, you can call it or go online. Okay, so let's call the front desk, 310-412-5211, that's the information desk, and you can give that officer that information, and then we'll, we'll basically come by your residence, okay?
So, our Commissioner Dorothy Cole is a good example. She is not computer savvy. So whenever we say we're gonna have meetings, we call her or mail her information, now she just acknowledged that she was gonna have an issue where her house is gonna be tented, and he heard the announcement about going online and do da-da-da-da-da, well, she doesn't have that skill set. So you just heard Officer Hert say, "Just make the call." Okay, I see the young lady in the back, if I have the mic, somebody, raise your hand, Ms. Falk. Hold, just raise your hand so we bring the mic. I got you, Ms. Brown. Okay, we hold the mic.
Oh, thank you.
If you don't mind standing, we'd appreciate it.
I don't mind standing. Hi, everybody, Deion Falk. I actually contacted Councilmember Franklin a couple of times, because I live in the Renaissance Development, and I'm right there where the traffic is for the forum, I drive past it most nights when they're having activities, and I'm noticing, I brought it to his attention, and I'm just kind of very concerned about it, I'm noticing that there's a lot of street food vendors that are starting to camp in the corners and the areas and stuff, and I feel like it's unsanitary, I see it a lot in LA, I'm really concerned whether we're gonna be able to get our hands around it in Inglewood, I really don't want to see our city go down in certain ways, and I feel like that's becoming an issue. So I want to know what's being done about it.
You know, we have had issues with the street vendors on several occasions. Sorry about that, gotta get closer here. Apparently not. You know, LA's taken the lead on that with, you know, decriminalizing a lot of that stuff, so, you know, it's cost-of-living things for, you know, those that are trying to make a living. We're still reviewing some of our internal IMC sections right now to address those issues, but here's the deal, I mean, if they're out there in, hiding out in a nook or cranny around outside the forum, we have people specifically assigned to the forum for those events, and then outside of the forum is a lot of our street officers, so we will need that call from the, you know, non-emergency line, and we'll send an officer out there to go deal with it. But yeah, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem, we're aware of it, but it's, you know, it's one of those ones that's a little bit tough, you know, you're taking someone's livelihood, and you have to return back their food to them if you're gonna confiscate their carts, and, you know, there's some challenges with that. Usually, the health and safety aspect from LA County deal with that, so we're trying to coordinate some responses to that, but they can't come out every single time at a forum event, so it kind of falls on us.
A lot of seniors are not computer savvy, and are not online, and, and so, so we miss out on a lot of things. You know, and most, everybody says, "Just go to your email and, and we'll take care of it," but for seniors, that's a problem.
And I understand, before we had the online forums, everyone was always calling in, doing the old method, so we still take those phone calls, if you want an extra patrol, if you want a traffic officer out, if you're going on vacation, we haven't stopped taking those calls, you still can call us at the front desk, and an officer has forms at his desk that he knows he needs to fill out and send it to the proper people, okay?
Yeah, I was at Chili's two or three nights here recently, and there's a truck with all kinds of drums and everything, and he sits up out there and he plays, blocks traffic, and, you know, it's almost impossible for people to get out. I would really appreciate it if you'd go ahead and run that guy out of there, 'cause he don't need to be there, he's not paying taxes, you know? Last night, he was there for at least two or three hours. Will you take care of him, please? Thank you.
You know what, Mr. AG, no one actually calls on him. So we're, no one actually calls and says that he's disturbing the peace or anything, so give us a call, Mr. AG, you know our number.
Here you're getting free live performances. And he's good, you heard that. The challenge becomes is when he now wants to be in his vehicle and drive up and down the street and perform, that is an issue regarding amplified sound. Okay, he's also homeless. Okay, this is the time, we got a few more minutes, talk to the officers, Dina Mike right here, and then the young lady over there. Please, if, stand if you don't mind.
Hi, we're having a problem on Spinning Avenue in the morning, dropping the children off in front of Century Park News. We have people that are parking their cars in the middle of the street, putting on their flashers, getting out, walking their kids all the way in the school. We have them making U-turns on Spinning Avenue in front of the school. One lady and her child almost got hit. She's going north on Spinning Avenue, traffic is coming south, she's letting her daughter outside the passenger seat, a passenger side, as she's closing the door, the car don't even see her, the car almost hit her and her daughter. And they're getting to the place where, when you, you blow your horn, they want to get mad. I have anger management, don't get mad with me. I'm sorry, I, I.
So it's just a point of clarity, because I am aware of that, and that is the double parking, flashing, not that curbside flashing, but double parking and then vacating the vehicle.
I'm writing, I'm actually writing this down, so, you know, I can put it on our board, and I'll have traffic deal with it. Unfortunately, with a lot of, I know at this school, we have several schools in the community, and this is not a problem just at that school, but it's a problem at a majority of the schools. So, you know, our resources, you know, trying to be at every school, we could try to rotate it around, because they're doing the same thing over and over and over again, I get it. So I'll let our motor and our traffic crew know, and we'll get them up there, okay?
I wanted to know, is there a curfew for people playing loud, 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 loud music during the day?
Amplified sound.
If the sound is disturbing your peace, you can call us, and then we'll make an assessment on whether or not it's amplified sound or not. Anytime. If it's disturbing your peace, we don't care what time it is, you call us, and then we'll come out and address the situation, okay? And then just make sure, I only see half the boards filled, if you can please fill out the, the stickies, and then we're gonna get to all those issues, we're planning on, me and the captain plan on meeting. Leave your contact information under also, and we're gonna, we're gonna get back to you with your issue or complaint. So if we don't answer your question now, write it down on a sticky, and then give it to one of the officers to put on the board.
Be right there, one second, just a comment. Every sticky that's there, if you leave your contact information, these officers pledge that him and his staff will call you personally. So if you don't put down there, and you don't raise your issue now, shame on you. We have another microphone, hello? Can you please stand up? Thank you.
I just wanted to comment with what the young lady said about the, like, the food vendors and stuff like that, what are we gonna do about the food vendors that are working on, like, private properties, like, a business will close at night, and then they'll open a taco stand at night, you know, or whatever, and then it's like all this traffic blocking, you, you know, you go and trying to get around, and people pulling out, and trying to get a taco in the middle of the night, but it's on private property, you know?
Definitely we need a phone call about that taco vendor. Most, most of the officers, they know how to check for City of Inglewood permits to make sure they're valid, that's the first thing they're gonna ask that taco vendor, "Hey, do you have a permit to sell tacos right now at this time, at this hour, on this piece of property?" And if they don't, unfortunately, they're gonna have to close up their taco stand and, and leave the city, okay? So just give us a phone call, you see any taco vendors or anyone selling anything at night on a closed property, give us a call, because the owner of that property probably doesn't even know.